The work session meeting for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors called order today is Thursday, February 20th. We are in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room on Melody Lane in Bisbee pursuant to ARS 38431.02H. Public will have access to the meeting room at least 15 minutes prior to the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by telephone or video internet conferencing. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors. We'll begin with a roll call vote. District one.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Crosby is with you again.
And District two.
Gomez is here.
And District three Antonori is here. All supervisors are present with Mr. Crosby attending via Microsoft Teams. We'll begin with items for discussions. We'll start out with a presentation by Mr. Howie said Fazio?
Fazio.
Fazio, yeah, that's what I thought. Mr. Our Public Works Director.
Where is yours, sir? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm the Director of Public Works. My name is Jason Fazio. Going to be discussing the third quarter updates. We usually go through and discuss different segments depending on the divisions. The first one we're going to start with is a fleet update. We have ordered about 22 new vehicles this year. In the past few years, we haven't been able to order a lot of vehicles, so some of our vehicles are falling behind on mileage. We do have a fleet replacement strategy in place, but that strategy has kind of been extended out because some of these vehicles have gone extended beyond the miles that they're supposed to. So we did get a bunch of vehicles ordered and we're trying to get that caught back up.
Let me, let me ask you, do you have to adhere to mileage if we have a vehicle that's functioning and serving its purpose?
No. So what we do is we have a general idea of what we should do as far as the best time to replace these vehicles mileage wise. We're real cautious with CCSO because they're out doing
Sure, that, yeah, I get that.
Things like that, but once those vehicles are rolled out of CCSO at 160,000, typically what we do is we repurpose those vehicles and we put them in other departments. We try to use departments that use the vehicles for say less than 8,000 miles a year. Currently, who we use those vehicles for mostly is adult probation, juvenile probation and things like that. They get the hand me down, so to speak, and we reutilize those vehicles currently. Once they get up over 180,000, we like to replace them. However, I will say, kind of to your point, we have vehicles that have, say, a new transmission and engine put in them at 170,000 or 175,000 when we're creeping up on that 180. And, you know, we're kind of the experts in that, and so we decide whether or not that vehicle should be left in service at some point. And those vehicles will sometimes go to solid waste or to our highways department to get a few more miles on them before we auction them off. Especially if the blue book on that vehicle is really low and we have more money in that vehicle than the blue book is showing. So it's kind of a return on investment. We try to get our money out of that engine and transmission that we put in there and make sure that we're not getting nickel and dime to death on some of these vehicles with a lot of miles. So it's kind of a chemistry once they get up over 180,000.
Yeah, I mean, I do that with my cars. When you start putting more into it than it's worth, it's time to get a new car.
Right.
You know, so if you're spending more money on maintenance and repairs than the value of the vehicle.
Right, and we have our own mechanics. I mean, we have sunk costs, so there's no reason for us to not continue running some of these vehicles that are maybe up over 180,000, but they're being used in the pit at the landfill or they're being used to just fuel skid steers and things like that.
So do you, do you publish or do you have a vehicle utilization chart that shows by VIN number or license number, whatever? The vehicle, you know, where it's assigned currently and how many miles per year and then what it's costing to maintain that vehicle somewhere?
Yeah, yes, so we can run aging reports to give us all kinds of information. That information is very easy to come up with.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need that in the future here coming up as we do the budget stuff.
Okay.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah.
And of course, get it to Ms. Gomez and Mr. Crosby.
Sure, sure.
So we don't, you know.
One of the things that we're doing currently, and I threw on this in this PowerPoint, is the vehicle utilization evaluation. And that's kind of to your point. We sent out a questionnaire on February 4th. And basically that went out to all the department heads to look at vehicles that were maybe underutilized or maybe vehicles, maybe they needed to add a vehicle because they're adding personnel or they have some project going on. We also run an aging report when we send that out just to see if we see something that's underutilized. And then maybe we hit up that director about, you know, what about vehicle, whatever, 212? You know, is this vehicle, it shows it's only got 20 miles on it this year. Do you need that vehicle? And we kind of do that just to make sure we don't have vehicles gathering cobwebs out there somewhere that really doesn't need to be used. A lot of times we do find a vehicle here, here or there that they really do need to run to the bank and it's only a mile or two.
But those are general purpose vehicles, but what about stuff like your backhoes and bulldozers and dump trucks and stuff?
Right, so heavy equipment is a totally different animal.
You handle that too?
Yes.
As part of the fleet?
It goes into our heavy fleet side. We have a light fleet division and a heavy fleet.
So we're mostly talking light fleet?
Current, currently, this is all light fleet stuff, yeah. So that utilization evaluation, we run through that and then we talk to the departments and we make sure that we're kind of on the same page as far as what vehicles are being used, how many they need and that kind of thing. And we do compare that against our aging report, like I said. We are also doing an analysis. We want to do this every five years now. This is something that hasn't been done in a long time and that's just making sure that we are doing the optimal fleet replacement strategy. You know, whatever it is that we're doing to make sure that we're replacing those vehicles when they should be replaced is, is the right time. Because we do have a lot of things that change, like just the the technology that's been out there, that the vehicles are lasting much longer. So are we replacing them too early? Should we wait a little longer or, you know, so we're looking at that kind of thing. We also look at what other counties do and make sure that we're not doing something outside the ordinary. Maybe there's something we caught that they didn't or something that they caught that we didn't, and so vehicles are being replaced differently.
There's got to be utilization software out there for fleet management that shows a cost curve versus a expense curve. To where you're, you're putting, you know, the, where you amortize the vehicle out based on what you paid for it, right? And then you've got the cost of maintenance. Somewhere there's going to be a line you cross that basically says now it's not worth keeping this vehicle anymore.
And that does exist and
That's what I'm saying. I know it exists. I'm saying, but that, is that something you're trying to get?
Yes. And some, and we do utilize some of that, some of that information, but then, like I said, with the transmissions and engines and as things get
Well, you can modify
Change the trajectory of that.
Yeah, yeah, you change, I get it, but I mean, I mean, but you're using something like that though. Do you do that for all the vehicles in the whole county? Like sheriff's office too and everybody?
No, we typically don't do that with every vehicle. The sheriff's department is modeled after a lot of different counties and
That's a safety issue because you don't want a vehicle breaking down in the middle of something. I get it.
And the same with our pool vehicles. Our pool vehicles have to be reliable to go to Phoenix or wherever, you know, some of them leave the state. So we want to make sure that those vehicles are always top notch. Those get replaced a little bit sooner.
Does, does the sheriff have an off-road vehicle fleet? Like the, like the border patrol bought a bunch of Ford Raptors and beefed them up for high speed chases on rough terrain.
Right.
So do you have anything like that?
We have some Raptors and stuff in the fleet.
But are they modified for off-road?
Yeah, those were donated vehicles.
Oh, yeah, those were the, I know those.
Yeah.
I know the story with them, yeah, but I'm talking about, but does he have an off-road vehicle fleet? You know, like UTVs and
He does.
Quads and stuff like that.
Yeah, the sheriff's department does have some quads and does have some ATVs.
Yeah, so that's what I'm getting at. What's, how are those handled? Are they
Those are not purchased from what I understand with any general fund money. I think that was all
Donated?
Donated granted the military.
But I mean, does he, does he, oh, he gets them through a, whatever it's called.
It might be through the surplus.
BP, no, I forgot what it's called. I know exactly. Grants.
Okay, so they were granted, yeah, grants. I think we also got some from the military though, because the landfill has a couple of
DRMO. I knew it was coming. One of these days, I couldn't remember it. Yeah, DRMO sales. But, but, yeah, so how do you, how do you, you just use those until they fall, the wheels fall off and then you go get new ones or?
No, well, we wouldn't replace it. That was a grant, so it wouldn't have replacement on it.
I think they would need them though. To get grants.
If it's built into the grant, I suppose it would, you know, we don't see a lot of these grants that the sheriff's department, so it might be better question for the sheriff's department.
Oh, that's what I'm getting at. So you don't manage those vehicles?
We really don't manage.
So he gets them for the grant and he just parks them somewhere?
Yeah, we do a little bit of maintenance on them and stuff. We work on them here and there, but it's not, you know, we're not the one that goes out and gets
For the UTVs.
For the UTVs.
Yeah, the off-road vehicle stuff, yeah. It's like, you don't have like trophy trucks out there, the Baja style off-road vehicles for chasing guys through the woods?
No.
No?
No. The only ones that are really set up that are, you know, kind of lifted and they have some big tires and stuff are the Raptors that were donated, you know? That, that I know of. We have a Bearcat that's obviously built for doing some major off-roading, but
Okay. Interesting.
So one of the other things that I wanted to touch on is just some things that we've done in-house to make sure that our fleet is running top notch. There was two lifts last year that didn't pass their annual inspection and so we budgeted and we made sure we replaced those lifts so that those were in jeopardy.
When you get rid of them? Do you surplus them?
Yeah, those will go to auction. Probably at our next auction, we'll probably have one here coming up in the, in the spring. And there'll be quite a few vehicles in there. And there'll be some, the lifts and some other things. I think there's a trailer.
Generally, how do they, how do they go on auction?
As far as
I mean, do they go for about blue book value, half blue book value or?
It really depends. Right after COVID, we sold some vehicles that went way over blue book. Some of them will go cheap, like some of the sedans and stuff, so we have to be careful when we sell those because there's a tipping point where the, the value on those is fairly high if you get rid of them at auction. Once they tip over 100,000, they, they're, people don't want to grill out for them, so you can lose
Who controls the auction?
The property manager.
Procurement.
Do they, do they stagger it so that there isn't all of one thing on the same auction? I buy stuff at auction and I could tell you, I love auctions where you have 25 of something for sale.
Well, typically when we do vehicles, so you, you know, there's 10 or 15 vehicles on there at one time.
Yeah, but I'm talking about like, 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 I'm going up to Phoenix tomorrow to pick up a farm and then I bought, and the auction I bought it on, there was 20 of them. So you watch the first couple of ones go and then all of a sudden the, the amount to buy the next ones are cheaper and cheaper and cheaper and cheaper. Until the last one, then the last one gets up, gets up there. But there's a sweet spot in there after so many vehicles or so many items go. And I just like look at some of these auction houses, of course, are just, they just want to push the inventory up. But to optimize pricing
Right.
There's a way to stagger those. So the property manager staggers that, so we don't sell too many of one things. Because there's always one guy that needs one or two at every auction, right? But that auction may not have six guys. So one guy just says, oh my God, this, this car is going to go for 500 bucks. It's worth it.
So we work with the property manager procurement when, when we go to sell those.
Yeah.
Typically, all our vehicles go at once, but we don't have a bunch of one kind. So it's usually like we have a King Cab four-wheel drive and then we have a sedan and then we have two half-ton pickups. It's, it's kind of a variety. It typically does pretty well.
Yeah.
No taken. We could look at possibly staggering if we have too many like half-ton trucks in there or something.
My brother, my brother buys cars on auction, then he goes and trades them in and buys new cars. Before, before he goes and buys a car, he goes and, I mean, it's just a tactic where you get, if you do your homework, you know, the blue book value on a vehicle generally. So if you're getting it for like a third of the blue book value or half of blue book value, man, it's worth getting it and then you go trade it in and get a new car, you know?
Now, some of the stuff we do put
I know guys do that, so that's what I'm saying. So that's why when you're, when I'm saying when you're selling stuff, if you, if you stagger like items, so they're not all on auction the same day or on other days, you know, where you have an SUV and a sedan and then next week you do another SUV and a sedan versus all the sedans on this day, all the SUVs on that day.
Yeah, we'll talk with procurement on
Yeah, I just, it's just trying to optimize every, you know, I don't want it nickel and dime, but you know, we're trying to pay roads here.
Right.
And we're trying to find money, find money to pay roads and if I can help you, help me, help me, help you.
Yeah.
You know, that's all I'm getting at.
Way to maybe, you know, make a little more revenue off of that.
Yeah, every, every dime we can find that we could put towards road maintenance and road improvement is what I'm trying to get at, right?
We do sometimes put a reserve on vehicles if we think that it is something that really shouldn't sell less.
Somebody on the low block.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you.
And then that'll just go to the next auction if it, if it doesn't sell. Sure.
I'm just trying to make sure we, we just milk every dime we can.
So of those 22 vehicles, we have eight, eight upfitted already. There's some vehicles that are delivered down here already. There's some that are still in Tucson that have not been delivered, but they are on the ground in Tucson.
Who, who buys them again? For the county? Who's the buyer?
As far as the person himself?
Yeah, who, who in the county goes out and does the quotes and the
That would be Joe Hutchison. He is our superintendent for fleet.
Okay, so is there, is there like a list of approved vendors you go through? Is there a broker you go through? Is there?
It's, it's under state contract and probably I should have introduced our, our, our guy. These are all three guys in the front row here are superintendents. You've got Fred Nixon from highways, Robert Hill is solid waste and then Joe Hutchison is fleet. And those superintendents are basically the frontline guys at each one of those divisions.
Right.
You know, we're talking about divisions. Joe happens to be over light and heavy. Fleet is combined under that superintendent.
I mean, I noticed we got mostly Chevys.
Yeah. Part of the reasons we do that is because of the software. Once you have a certain software and training with your people, that's pretty much the vehicle they know how to work on.
You're talking about for your mechanics?
Yes, and, and as far as value to the county, because the county has to buy software and training equipment and all kinds of things for a particular vehicle.
And now, is there any time when the, when the supplier realizes they have you buy the short hairs and they can manipulate their bids? Because they know you're kind of pigeonholed into this because you got all this money invested in parts and software and everything else?
We haven't seen that, but we do do our due diligence and once in a while we'll throw out feelers just to see what the prices are going. Government prices, I should say, for other vehicles of similar, you know, styles, models.
Of different makes and manufacturers.
So Ford, we may look at Ford or Dodge or something like that and a comparable model just to see if the prices are
We don't have any Teslas, do we?
We do not.
Okay, good, good. I hate Teslas. And Subarus too. We don't have any Subaru.
We don't have any Subaru.
I hate Subarus, especially with bike racks or Knieves on the top of them. I just can't. Bolos, I guess are okay. I'm just saying.
Yeah. So we have a couple of oddballs out there, but it's, it's not very many, you know, we have a Jeep. I think there's a Jeep out there and we have a couple of Fords. We have some oddball stuff, but it's not very many. Our fleet is mainly, and light fleet is mainly Chevrolet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know if there was some kind of, I guess, I get your point that if you invested in the infrastructure to support the vehicle, switch to a different brand, you got to spend the money. I get it. But I, I have experience with suppliers that once they know you're, they're it, they, they really, they really, you know, they slowly ramp up their they know you can't just easily switch and go to somebody else, so they take advantage of that.
The thing we have to watch more than our suppliers of vehicles on that is the supplier of parts. Our vehicle suppliers are state contracts, so they're kind of tied into making sure that things are on the level. Uh, part suppliers are a different story. So once in a while we do go out there and we just kind of throw out and get prices on like filters and things like that to make sure we're getting the best prices on that, because that really adds up. So
Yeah.
Tires too. Joe's really good at doing his due diligence and making sure we're, you know, doing the best with what we have. You know, as far as money when it comes to buying parts and things like that.
Okay.
So moving on, we made a note here. We had ordered and you got, this was before your guys' time, but we had ordered two utility tractors for development services. And these tractors were basically, I think mainly going to be used for mowing out of the airports. And those, those have both been received and I think they are in service, are they not?
What are, what kind of tractor, like John Deere's, Kubota's?
They're both John Deere's, right? Yeah.
Where do you buy them from? Locally?
So this is, is our local ag.
Yeah, okay, local guy.
Yeah, so our local ag, so John Deere has two. They have a construction and they have an ag group. And basically depending on where you're, where, where we are in the county, that they almost kind of decide where we buy our equipment from. We can always go to another vendor of John Deere, but pretty much it goes to Stotz because they're in our county, so.
Do you have to get them serviced afterwards there?
No.
No, they let you service them? Because I know there's like a thing of the right to repair stuff with John Deere where they weren't giving out their parts manuals and they weren't allowing over the counter OEM parts to be sold for a while.
No, so we're, we're allowed to do all of the maintenance and, and repairs on our machines. While they're under warranty, we try to push that off on Stotz to do all the warranty stuff, but no, we work on most all of our stuff. Almost everything that's in the county as far as fleet goes, heavy or light, we work on that in-house. Very little goes, goes out for any maintenance.
Okay.
Uh, we talked about the upfits a little bit. I mentioned that because there was some conversations in the past with previous boards, at the previous board. And basically we were falling behind in outfits. We couldn't get them done fast enough, so we farmed some of those out to specialists up in Tucson. And we hired a guy in-house to do outfits. So we're doing really good on outfits right now. They're getting outfitted and up to the sheriff's department or wherever they need to go. All right, this is, I put this slide in here for any questions because I knew you guys would probably be but you, you kind of went through asking questions as we went. So I mean, if you're good, we can jump over to highways. All right, for the highways update, we typically go through a work plan. The work plan is something that we've been hit up by the auditor in the past, so they make sure, where they want to know that the board's been, you know, the work plan's been discussed with the board. So it's something that we make sure that we try to talk through at every quarterly work session. So you'll see on this Gantt chart, basically the mowing and, and the maintenance mowing and the right of, or the maintenance grading and right-of-way mowing pretty much never stops. We do that pretty much 12 months out of the year. The mowing does slow down here in a few months, but it never really stops because we're trying to basically keep up with stuff that's grown over the, this last summer. Monsoon season's going to come and everything shoots right back up. I don't think we have any mowers running currently, but like literally in a couple of weeks, we'll be out mowing again. It's just kind of one of those hit and miss things.
Let me, let me ask you, again, out of curiosity, why don't we tar our shoulders instead of mowing or bake them with something or put some other kind of aggregate down so prevents shoulders from growing up to, instead of just mowing constantly?
I think in the past they would spray the shoulders and we had a really hard time getting people certified for that.
Okay.
Um, we do have some classes set up for a couple of guys to go get that certification again, so we can spray that. And that'll cut back on some of the mowing right at the edge of pavement. It's very
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, like the, because I, I, like on where I'm at, right, Dragoon Road, let's just say, that, that grass gets like this high out there.
Yeah.
You know?
So right at the edge of pavement, we want to protect that, you know, from the grass growing up through it stuff, so we want to spray that. It's kind of expensive. We probably wouldn't spray the entire right-of-way because we, we do it with the mowers. We take from the edge of pavement all the way to the, the fence.
The fence.
Right-of-way, you know, we try to get that all cleaned up, so it's, it's, it looks really good.
And it gives you a chance to see the javelina before they come shooting out in front of you.
Right, and we wouldn't spray all of that because that vegetation also holds that, that drainage line together or that bar ditch or, you know, depending
Talking about the shoulders, right? So it's where you could pull off, you know, some of those shoulders there. You know, when the grass is this high, you don't know what you're pulling off into. So people, and I see this all the time, people don't pull off. They turn their hazards on. They got one tire off the road and the rest of the car, 90% of the car is still in the lane.
So most of our roads are pretty well mowed. I see that more on the state highways. I'm not trying to beat up the state, but our
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Typically look better than the state highways when it comes to mowing. We're out there a lot more often. We have less roads obviously to mow, so but we, we are getting a guy or two certified to do spraying so that we can kind of mitigate some of that along the edge of the pavement. And around signs and things like that. Guardrails, guardrails are a thing in the past that engineering, that Jackie and I've talked about, you know, and making sure we're getting stuff like that taken care of, so people see the guardrails and, you know, you don't want
I mean, you see the state puts a lot of creosote or some other kind of oil or something down to stop the weed growth. I don't know what that is.
And we've talked about doing a couple of other things like putting down millings. We discussed that at
Putting down what?
Millings.
Oh, millings.
We discussed getting some millings probably from the state at the last work session and that's something that we could potentially use on
Well, like, oh, they just did on 90. Where does all that go? From the millings they did when they did State Road 90?
So some, some of the millings that, from the project that they're doing, from what I understand, they're going to be coming to us. And a lot of those millings are going to go actually to our landfill for storage. We have
Yeah, by me, there's a big pile of them next to the
Yes. Right by the
Dragged in transfer Yeah, yeah, the transfer station.
But Robert has a big area cleared out at the landfill in Wetstone and that's the closest place they could move that material to.
Yeah, that's right down the road.
Yeah, we're going to have a stockpile there. And that's something that Jackie and I've talked about.
It just gives that to you or they charge it for?
It's, it's given to us.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can't hear.
Uh, uh, what she said was they, they split it between some of the municipalities, so
Oh, like share, share it, so like Wetstone and Sierra Vista.
Right, so we don't get it all. They'll give some of it to other municipalities, yeah.
Well, the section in Sierra Vista should go to Sierra Vista. The section in Wachukah should go to Wachukah and then the section in the county.
And, and to be honest, that's what they'll do.
Yeah.
As a trucking costs, that's what they're trying to do is they're trying to mitigate that trucking costs that they have, that really high dollar trucking costs to get rid of that material.
And they eat that?
It's, it's making money for them if they get rid of it nearby. So anywhere that they can get, get away with giving it to someone, they don't have to haul it back to one of their yards in Tucson or, you know, stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's cool. That's good to know. Get some new ones. You got to get gallons to pave more roads, man, so we get more, more millings.
Yeah. Uh, so we just did a project with engineering on the Bisbee Junction Bridge. It was falling apart. We did some slope repairs and that's been completed. Uh, Mosin Road had some erosion issues that we went out and did some culvert repair. And this was north of mile plus five. We did some shoulder repair and a hot mix on North Mosin Road. Uh, the thing we're working on is right now, and you guys may have seen this on our weekly public works updates that we send out, and that's that we're hauling chips. And what that is, is we're hauling chips to prepare for chip seal season.
Where do you get them from?
Right now, we're getting them from Maddox.
Where's that at?
Douglas. Yeah, and so Maddox is one of the vendors that we use because they're a very clean chip. Uh, the testing that Jackie does on Maddox allows us to use those chips on, if I'm not mistaken, higher speed roads. They're cleaner, they have more fractured faces and they meet specs. If we don't meet specs with chips, and we can buy chips from other, other vendors in the county, but typically if they don't meet specs, you would use those on a lower volume or a lower traffic or lower street road where, you know, so those chips aren't just coming up.
So, so Johnson Road Mine is selling and I see the Arizona, they got the big belly dumpsters, Arizona rock or something trucks hauling gravel out of there, out of the mine up there all the time.
Yeah, they, they sell to our local vendors. I know that the Johnson Mine sells rock to like Wilcox Rock and Sand and things like that. Even though Wilcox Rock and Sand has their own quarry, uh, there's some interesting rock in the Dragoons and it's red and they have, it's called
Yeah, it's red.
Red or whatever, and then they sell it to the vendors and it's decorative, so.
They sell it for a higher price.
Yeah, it goes to different.
I got you.
Again, I don't know the details of that, but I, I, just from dealing with these vendors long enough and, and myself going to buy decorative rock for the yard, like I know where that comes from and why they do what they're
So the stuff in Douglas is just regular gray rock?
In Douglas, I think, I think they have different colors there too.
We have red rock, we have red rock in Dragoon.
They've been around for a long time.
Yeah.
Well-known company, makes some really good
Okay.
Vaporation.
Yeah, no, we have really good luck with them partially because they have a wash plant.
Boy, that's a long way to go if you're going all the way to Benson with chip seal though.
It, it is, but what's interesting about chip seal or chip seal season, so
What do you mean for chip seal?
When we get into chips, the reason, one of the reasons we start hauling this early is because people run out of chips. They get POs and people start hauling the year before. So if we don't get in there and start moving some of this material, and in some cases we've actually hit up vendors in Tucson and other areas and they're sold out. There's mountains, there's, there's hundreds of thousands of tons of material there, but it's already spoken for. And so we have really good luck with Maddox. We have good luck with Wilcox Rock and Sand, they're local vendors. Our local vendors, our trucking costs stay low that way. So that's kind of. Sure.
Kind of really good community stuff. I know one time they were gonna, I think, escalate Turkey.
Hey, I'm looking here. Saint Patrick Church parking lot striping.
I knew that would come up.
Is that the Bisbee? Is that the Bisbee?
Yeah. So, okay, just so you know, this is on hold. We're supposed to re-stripe, uh, some handicap spots up there. Because there's restricted parking and Sharon might know more about this than me.
Are you looking for a church and state lawsuit or?
No, we, we do lease parking spots in that church parking lot for county employee parking for the courthouse.
Have you ever been to the courthouse?
We have a lease agreement.
Fine parking.
Thank you.
So then they lease for the parking.
Yeah, we have a lease agreement with the, uh, Saint Pat's Church and.
So, so with that agreement, uh, I was hit up. A few months ago about making sure that those handicap spots, they were in a different place. We, they want them moved or something. And so we're gonna re-stripe them. We ran into a little bit of an issue because it's gonna offset some of the lines up there and it was just brought to my attention. So we just put it on hold for right now until we figure out what we need to do. Cause. We don't want it to make, to make it look bad either. We don't want to make it look like it's hobscot together. So we'll have conversations about that.
I ran a bill about striping parking lots. Cause I couldn't find a place to park. I had an F three fifty and I couldn't park my truck. Because all the damn parking lots in Tucson were designed for Priuses. And those developers will try to shove as many parking spaces as they can into a parking lot and they make it the. Absolute bare minimum width. You know, then, you know, I opened my door into some guy's Subaru.
Well, you appreciate what we did here because in Melody, we widened all the parking spaces here a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Previous director had slurry done and we striped and made them a little wider. I did the same thing at Fleet last year. I think it might've been this year, but we did.
So what are they, are you doing nine foot?
It's over there, it's nine foot.
Yeah.
I think it's nine foot over here too.
Yeah. Common sense, man. I don't know why people put seven and a half foot parking spaces in. And you would think that a foot and a half doesn't mean much, but that means a, a lot. But all those parking lots are all seven and a half foot.
Those guys with big trucks take a lot of space.
It's Arizona, to find out loud. It's Arizona. I mean, everybody owns a truck or at least.
It's too far out.
Yeah. That's why I hate going in. I love Cochise County because at least a lot of the parking lots around here accommodate trucks. You know, Tucson, they're all designed for, they're designed for. In Tucson, same thing with drive-throughs in Tucson. Can't drive your truck through a drive-through without jumping, running over curves because the. They make these really sharp corners for Priuses and Subarus. You know?
I've seen your trucks. You probably, I mean, it, it'll handle a curb, right?
Oh yeah, no problem. Yeah, it's just.
It's like mine, it's got big enough tires.
I, I take advantage of the four-wheel drive capability of my truck. So, but anyways. I'm glad you guys are doing nine foot. Good job.
So, so that.
Normal, normal thinking people.
That last comment, I mean, we hit it through this. In this Gantt chart, we talk about that several times, hauling chips. That's just basically talking that. We're using several road yards. We team up the guys. We like to get the public works guys together.
Do we own those yards?
Uh, the road yards?
Yeah.
Yes.
The county owns all that.
Yes.
They got a lot of room to put big piles of chips in there?
Yeah, yes. Some of them don't have room at the actual road yard, but we have sites.
Like, like the one in Benson on, uh. Oh, what, I forgot the road that is right off of Palm Marine there. There's not a lot of room there, is there?
No. Yeah, that one doesn't get chip stockpiled at it. Usually we stockpile out by Cascabel. There's an area we can stockpile. Or we use a transfer station. You know, we get with Robert and say, hey, clear out a spot, we're coming. And then we'll put it there. So it's secure. It's in this area.
Alright.
You used to do it, the one at the county fairground? Is that what you've been storing?
In Douglas, it's usually stored at King's Pit.
Okay.
It, I, I believe that's right. Okay. Yeah. So King's Pit, that's where I always stored it. Uh, Fred's got a whole new. Program going. He's trying to, uh, get more efficient with fuel and stuff. So. You get creative with where we stockpile.
Oh, we have a rail line that goes up there. We could take it all the way up by. Just saying.
So like I said, it, it kind of touches on that through all the road yards that we're stockpiling this chip. And that's just to prepare ourselves for going into chip seal season. And we want to make sure our chip is secure. So we can. Do what we want to do is 70 miles a year. You guys know we have about 700 miles of road. So in, just as a general rule.
And your cycle.
Yes. General rule of thumb. Uh, it doesn't always work perfectly. Davis Road needs chipped every five years. There's things like that, but then there's other roads.
Just because of the heavy use on the road.
Yeah, it's our wide load road and things like that, but there's other roads that haven't been chipped in 20 years. So. But as our general rule of thumb, that's what we try to.
If 191 was upgraded, would it take the traffic off of Davis Road?
Sure would. It would take a portion of it for sure.
Yeah.
191 would be a great road. I've, I've heard you guys talk about it and I think that. I think we're on the right track. 191 is.
Alright.
That's just opinion. Yeah.
That's part of the lobbying effort.
The Dragoon Bowie Quiet Area, this is something we worked with engineering on as well. Um, from what I understand, we weren't compliant with what was required by the county to have a quiet area. So we went in and put.
What is that?
You've probably seen it, the new plastic delineators that go through there.
Quiet area. What is that?
They don't have the horn. Is, is that correct, Jackie? They don't have the horn anymore?
The train, the, the, when they're going through there.
But what is that, what does those poles do for that?
That's the, the rules that the. Yeah. Oh, oh, you know how the, the traffic will try to.
Yeah, when the, when the arms come down.
Right. And they'll try to scoot between.
So you, it, it's just a pole to keep them from zigzagging between the, the railroad arms where there's no train horn.
And, and Brad, if you hold tight, because, um, the, what I'm talking through, you may have more questions. We haven't completed that. If you notice, there's a portion of it that's not done. That's the railroad's right of way and we're not allowed to go in there and do that portion. Until we go through their traffic control and get their guys out there on site. We have to pay them to do their portion of traffic control.
I hate railroads, man.
And once that's set up through engineering, we'll go out there and finish putting them. We put them in our area. So we would know what tools we needed, how long it would take to do each foot and so forth. So we know how many guys to send and what to do. Cause. Once we start paying the railroad for that traffic control, we want to go in there and just knock ass and get out so they can leave.
Okay, I got it.
And that's what we're waiting on for that, right?
Yeah, we're working through that right now. How, how many quiet zones do we have in Cochise County on? Just two?
Yeah, we have one in Dragoon and one in Bowie.
That's it?
And we've done the one in Bowie, our section as well. We're waiting on them on that one as well. So.
I mean, there's not one going through Benson? There's not one.
Those aren't quiet zones. They still blow the horn when they go through those.
And that would be City Benson who requests that? Yeah, I got, I got it. I, I just, I just. That's just down the road for me. It's the only place in Bowie. The other, I just find that hard to believe.
We've, we have had requests for San Simone. So we're gonna look into that one too.
Okay. Alright. Do we have any sections of roads that cross the railroad tracks at what would be considered? Unauthorized crossings?
Unauthorized.
They had these in Pima County where people. Created roads, roads across the railroad tracks and the railroads kept ripping them up and.
I'm not aware of it. I'm not gonna say they don't exist because I've seen side by sides rushing around out.
Yeah.
Right through when they stop. And I've seen vehicles get around somehow. I don't take my county vehicle where they're going, but.
Um, there's a lot of under, uh, culverts that you can drive UTVs and ATVs through. They're really big. And that's how you get around the tracks. Cause it, and there's some overpasses or underpasses or whatever. Down there, yeah. Okay. Interesting. Okay.
Uh, Civil Road, uh, monsoon shoulder repair. We're working on that. We've done a couple of repairs out there. It keeps washing out. Engineering and, uh, so Brad and Fred are supposed to meet out there and decide if we're doing Gabions or what we're gonna do to. Prevent that from washing out anymore. But that's a project that we're working on together, uh, currently. Uh, let's see, hauling. The chip seal prep on Central Highway, Hopkins, Webb, Thompson. Uh, those are all 75% complete. Martinew is, we're gonna put some hot mix on. Uh, Cortland, Whitewater School and Bell Ranch, those are also about 75% complete. We're just prepping those for chip seal season.
Those are all, I'm sorry, those are all Frida, right? Around the area?
Most of those are in the Alfred area. The, the, this is because as we skip through this, you'll see that's like the Douglas area on the, on the Gantt chart. So Douglas and Alfreda Road Yards are, are tied together. We use the other Road Yards to haul the material. But, and, and once they start chip seal season, they work together as a team as well. But. Some of these smaller projects where they're like prepping a road or something, it's typically like that road yard goes out and does some cold patch or some hot mix or whatever. Uh, to get the road ready to go in and chip seal. Uh, the last one there is chip seal, uh, road prep for Kansas Settlement. Kansas Settlement's one of those roads that's deteriorating where we, you know, and we've got to do something with it. We know that it needs asphalt. We know it needs some major construction to make it right. But to keep it drivable, we're gonna have to go in there and prep it and we're gonna have to chip seal it. Um, we don't have the money to do an asphalt overlay like it needs.
You don't think you'd work out of doing those?
Yeah, so they put a batch plan in now.
So we, we don't typically, we don't lay asphalt.
Right, right.
The equipment to lay asphalt.
Oh, okay.
So to have someone come in and do it.
You gotta hire a contractor.
Keep in mind, this is gonna exceed that 280,000 that we talked about. So we're talking $20 million or something to get that road.
Okay.
Are you kidding?
If we asphalted it, if we chip sealed it's not, I'm sorry, yeah, we're gonna go in and chip seal it.
Okay.
And we're gonna chip seal it in July, after July. So it'll be next fiscal year's money. It, as far as that's concerned, where labor goes. But we're hauling chip to prepare for that still.
And so you're saying asphalt, when you deal with asphalt, you have to deal with a company that, that's all inclusive? So you couldn't get the asphalt from Douglas?
Well, they could. I mean.
They could get it from Douglas.
Yes. I, I'm not sure what vendor they would use. Typically they'll use whoever's closest kind of thing because of trucking costs.
Right.
Um, but we don't have the equipment to lay asphalt. We typically don't lay asphalt. The only time we do it is for patching. And what we'll do is we'll have a belly dumper, a dump truck go out and get the load and potentially we would be customers at some point for this reason. But we get a load in a dump truck or a belly dump and we go out and put it on, say, a fissure or. Maybe somewhere where we have to cut the road out. And we put that hot mix down and we'd have one of our blade operators blade it. And then we'd put a steel wheel and roller on it and get it nice and packed down. And, but it's usually small sections. It's not anything major like a whole road.
A whole road and see you have a vendor from, I don't know, how many other asphalt plants right there in Cochise County? Is there one in Sierra Vista?
There is one in, uh, K E and G has an asphalt plant.
I mean, did you notify like to say, hey, you know, we're gonna be doing this. Going out and, and getting, uh, bids on asphalt, you know, and notify the cities like. Service and Douglas, hey, maybe you wanna reach out to these people?
You mean if we're, it, well, for, right now, we're just doing patchwork. So.
Yeah, but down the road.
If we, it wouldn't be up to us to do that if we're contracting out the.
Well, sometimes you know, you get notifications, hey, you may want to try to go to the, for this contractor. I mean, so I think one of the things is that sometimes people don't know, but cities don't know what's going on until. After the fact, and then they don't get a chance to be part of the bid. And reach out to these contractors. So just.
No, our contractors do occasionally hit us up and say, hey, we, we have a contractor right now that asked Fred today. Where can I buy chip? Like, cause they're gonna do a chip job for us. And we possibly have all the chip locked up that they need, but we've already locked it up for our project. So. Hopefully somebody like Maddox can make more chip and sell it to that contractor so that they can complete the, the job that we, uh. Hired him for. I'm sure they'll find it. We've had this problem in the past where we're all fighting from the same vendor to get chip or whatever. You know, but as far as asphalt, we don't do a lot of big projects. It's usually small patching. And we don't have a lay down machine. Our lay down machine is basically a dump truck. They'll put it in a blade operator, blade it out and then let it down. So.
Those tombstones now, right? Tombstone area, like the March Road and everything, is that what the spell?
They're on our, so they're on our blading maintenance.
Okay.
So when you see that blading maintenance on there. We're, like, we maintain, I'm trying to remember, we just maintained, uh. Middle Marsh month? Was it December? End of December was the last time we were out there. Now, you know, one of the things we talk about is we blade that road more often because it goes to. The public lands. And if you do the math on it, we're really almost blading it as much as we've later regularly maintained the road now.
Cause I think Jackie mentioned there's like 400 cars, 400, whatever vehicles that use that road. Is that correct? Even higher than that? It's a lot of cars.
Alright, we put, uh. Questions at the end of this. We kind of talked through that stuff. Yes.
On, on some of these graded roads, so for example, uh, Ghost Town Trail from Pierce to Benson, right?
Yeah.
That's a long, long road and it's got like five or six washes that crosses, across it and they get really. Heavily filled and they get muddy and then they fill up with sediment. Do you guys look at eventually some schedule to put culverts in? On, on those roads or it's just not worth it?
We, we, I mean, we wouldn't because we're, we're the maintenance side of things. That might be more of a Jackie question, but. What, what we look, I mean, like if something was out there where we thought we needed a culvert, we would probably get with engineering, but some of those. Uh, washes are really, really wide and they fill up with sand and.
Yeah.
We just go out and blade them after it rains and it's a primitive road too. That's something else to keep in mind. And yeah, those primitives that we don't have a lot of. Maintenance on and we also have very little.
So you don't, you don't very often grade that road? I've seen it graded all the time.
Well, we, we, we do. It, it, we do blade it quite a bit, but it's primitive. So we blade it two to three times a year.
Okay, okay. Alright.
It's like Runway Trail is getting, um, every four weeks?
Yes, good question. It's, uh, or supervisors requested that be done at some point because of the heavy traffic. Including those monitors.
Because of the trucks that are coming from somewhere past the hill, right?
Yes.
And, and are they still doing it? I haven't seen talks of them. That was when they were doing the border wall? Right? And so I don't think there's any of that.
It, it, yeah, they. Yeah, and, and I think part of it is exactly what she said. I think we had commercial. You know, running on that road. And so residents were a little upset that the commercial was turning up this section. So the county agreed to go out and make sure that they were maintaining that.
My sister lives off that. She goes, don't mention anything about it. Cause they've been doing it, you know, more than they ever did before. So I just want to be fair. And I questioned it. So the miller can say I'm trying to, you know, call my sister up.
Okay. Well, and I didn't know that. She lived out there.
Yeah.
The guys do a really good job.
They do.
And, and they try to, uh, be fair and consistent with all of our roads. And that's one of the reasons we're very careful about going out and blading. Like we'll use Middle Marsh as an example, uh, five or six times a year because it would actually get bladed more than. That, that section of the road that we're really paying attention to with commercial use.
No, and I don't know if this is the right place to, to bring this up, but I did notice like, you know, the roads are more flat where before. It was built up like this. So you had gullies. So when the rain, especially from Sal got kicked out, you know, there was a place for the water to go. And now it's just flat. Like I, I went out to replace it. I was amazed that it was just all one level. So I'm wondering what happens.
So every five or 10 years, material has to be hauled back in on some of those roads to get that crown back in the road. And so we're getting to a point on a couple of our roads where material needs to haul, be hauled back in is all. And it, it takes some time to get that done. It's hard to imagine, but you know, to do, you know, 10 miles of road might take. 10,000 tons of material, which is.
You're taking, putting it in to build a crown? You have to do, you have to put, bring it in.
Lots of material in there. It takes lots of.
Alright.
It, it's hard to imagine until you actually see it happen. It's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, we've been taking up your time. I just wanted to, because we don't.
No worries. We got the.
I enjoy the questions. Make engineering come up.
So, uh, the last thing we touch on typically at these, uh, are just kind of go over the solid waste financials.
But we don't do recycle, right? It's not worth it.
It's not worth it. So what we do is we do recycle what's marketable. And then if we didn't do that, we'd be raising our tipping fees right now.
Yeah.
There's cardboard, right?
Cardboard, steel, aluminum, car, copper. Actually cardboard is, is making us money now.
What?
Because we don't truck it. If we had to truck it, it wouldn't. But because we don't have to.
How do you make money on cardboard, man? I could see aluminum and steel.
Don't they buy and invest?
Yes.
There you go. I see trucks full of cardboard.
You're kidding me?
No. And so the one thing that you guys would like to hear about this is, so last year we hauled about two thousand tons of material out of our landfill to either cardboard, steel, aluminum, copper or whatever that didn't get landfillled.
Oh, yeah, that's good. That's good. Keeps the landfill.
So we are doing a portion of recycling, but that two thousand tons made revenue for the solid waste system. So that's what helps keep our tipping fee down, which is on the verge of having to be changed.
Huh.
Um, basically what we're looking at, at, at this third quarter is we're doing fairly well. We're in the black by, you know, um, two hundred and eighteen thousand right now. That's not a ton of money looking at this because this is a, a business within the government. We don't want to be in the red there. Our, our, our biggest cost centers, of course, are payroll and operations and maintenance and heavy fleet maintenance.
Is there a way to optimize revenue from this, from? To get, to get additional, I mean, you're charging tipping fees. These, these are private garbage companies you're talking about, right?
Everybody in the county pays sixty-four dollars a ton. And, and whether they're, whether they're city, whether they're you and I, yes.
And then transfers to their general fund or to the cost of sorrel trash or whatever the charges per, per month to their.
No, no. So they pay the sixty-four dollar tipping fee per ton when they bring it to us.
Right.
And then that revenue is generated to pay all of our expenses in solid waste.
No, I got, I got.
Okay.
I got you. I'm, I'm talking about making money to do other things with that money, like pave roads or, or.
Wait, this, this is a special revenue fund, so.
Are we prohibited by?
Yes.
The statute for making money on it?
Yes, so solid waste money revenues have to be back into solid waste.
All right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I had a question for Mr. Fazio and that is, what do people do with dead lithium batteries and other batteries and other hazardous waste? Or what should they do? Maybe I should ask.
That's a really good question. We just had, uh, basically a meeting with ADEQ on this to find out what the best practices are. And right now we're just isolating it, whatever's kind of sneaking in through the door, we're isolating it and that'll go to, uh, special hazardous waste facility. And, uh, but we're really recommending that those batteries, like say if they buy batteries from Home Depot or uh, Lowe's, you know, most of those are rechargeable for your drills and stuff, that they return them to those places because those places have a special, you know, process to deal with those. We really don't. We're actually paying to.
Do you have any fires from batteries?
Yeah.
You should have one in Douglas, right?
We had one in Wilcox, uh, a few years ago. We had one in, we have, you know, I say we have one in Douglas, but we've had several fires at, at all of our sites. We have fires occasionally.
Crushing, crushing lithium batteries.
Yes. So cell phones typically, they get thrown away and cause fires. But it, it is.
Just cell phones. There's all sorts of stuff that happen with the batteries.
Yeah. We have really good, uh, these shit attendants that really question people when they're bringing in things and, and typically we try to weed that out at this, right at the.
They throw garbage bags and full of stuff. You don't know what's in there.
Yep, but even if they say, you know, yeah, somewhere in there, there's a cell phone or whatever, then our guys will actually try to find it. They'll try to dig it out so we don't have a fire.
And tires, when they, they, you separate those? So do you allow them?
Yeah, tires, tires are a special waste and so we do have a special waste revenue for that and deal with tires as well.
Are you doing all that enhancement of the Douglas waste? Cause I actually went out and saw it, I think a couple of weeks, no, a month ago. And, uh, the doors and all that are getting get fixed, right?
Yep. And a part of that, so Facilities and I recently had a meeting and Facilities was gonna go out. They were actually kind of wondering why we found a contractor to do this. And I think previous, uh, directors or something at some point in time, something happened to where Facilities wasn't working on the buildings. And it, it appears that Facilities is gonna start working on the buildings again. This one here, we, we took and got, grabbed the bull by the horns. Robert found a contractor and went out and he has, the doors are ordered. I think they're gonna be delivered anytime. Once that happens, the contractor will show up and, and he'll reskin the bottom twelve feet that's damaged and replace all the doors on the residential side.
They really needed it too.
Yeah. And that comes out of this, uh, it comes out of the transfer station improvement monies, which is two hundred thousand dollars a year. We put away that money to work on our transfer stations.
Do you upgrade them? Is that what you're talking about?
That money goes for upgrades or any kind of maintenance that would not be covered by Facilities.
You build like the concrete.
I just have slide, slide ins for the, a, a, anything you can think of that wouldn't be covered by Facilities. We pretty much use that. A lot of that money goes for like our wind catch fences that keep the trash from leaving the site.
Oh, gotcha.
Um.
And then, and then the stuff that crushes, right? Cause I went to the one in Douglas and those you improved too.
Yes. In fact, that's one of the things that Joe and his crew just did for the city of Bisbee. Actually, they did it for us, but the, the, the ones that, that's here in Bisbee. They redid the whole walking floor and compactor and everything. And Douglas is probably gonna be one of the next ones. Yeah, it's got some issues.
I think you've mentioned to me, we talked before that the small little like up by me with Dragoon, those lose money? Because you're only charging seven bucks.
Yeah, those are typically funded by the board. I mean, those, it's general fund money. Some of that general fund money comes over to us.
That surplus there, you can't offset that?
At the two eighteen?
Yeah.
I don't remember how much we get from.
I'm just, I'm just trying to balance the math. So, so those small little.
It's part of the half set sales tax, so I think it's around five hundred thousand. I can't remember though. Our total budget's six million. I'd have to get you that answer in.
I was just curious. I mean, so, so right now you charge, I go, I, I go to the dump every two weeks, pickup truck, seven bucks. I pay at the little Dragoon transfer station.
Right.
So, so you said you lose money on that, right?
Yeah, it's because of trucking costs.
All right, so to, to take a trip, you sound like diesel fuel and, and maintenance and whatever to drive one of those trucks up to pick up the dumpsters, the big.
All of it, yeah.
Big roll-ons?
Yep.
So, so what would be the, if you were to go neutral, what would that be? Eight dollars, nine dollars, ten dollars?
I don't know. I'd have to do, I'd have to figure that out.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't have that figured. But i- if you look at the overall, what we're in the black is two hundred and eighteen thousand. We take eighty thousand tons of material. We haul two thousand tons off somewhere. Our whole, but you know, we got six million dollars worth of revenue and we're left with two hundred and eighteen thousand. It's not a lot. So.
Yeah.
We just got hit with a new ADEQ permitting process too, that's gonna take about a hundred thousand dollars out of this budget. And it's all permits. And they're gonna charge us to landfill. So right now, every ton of material.
The government charging the government.
Every ton of material we take in at the landfill right now is twenty-five cents a ton and it's going to fifty-eight cents a ton. So it's things like that that's gonna drive our tipping fees up. It's already been approved. It's ever, it's happened. It actually, it started in January and.
And that's approved by the legislature, by the state?
No, that's, that's. It's through rules, through rulemaking, through the, the governor's office, uh, approves it.
Yeah.
It doesn't go through the legislature.
So we're looking at about sixty to seventy thousand dollars that that's gonna basically come out of that two hundred and eighteen thousand. So it's gonna put us real thin. And so that's something that I was gonna bring up to our rate review advisory board and have a discussion about possibly increasing the tipping fee. So it's something that we all should be thinking about. That kind of covers everything, guys. I don't want to get into Jackie's time unless you have any other questions.
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Fazio.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.